From coming in and sitting down and working the workshop for us. At this time, we get the approval of the agenda. Can we motion?
The move second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Uh.
Opposed? The record show six zero. Now we have every patient from Councilman Gass.
Good surprise. Most question that I'm asking Father, we'd like to thank you for this day and thank you for the health and strength you give us each and every day. Father, thank you for this meeting. Father, we'd like to do everything that's pleasing and willing in your name. Father, thank you for the men that came here to present to us, Father, to show us how to do better for our county. And bless everyone that's on the side of my voice, these and any others blessed, we ask in your name. Amen.
Thanks. Now we're down to the presentation and discussion of the capital project sales tax. I'm turning over to Cochran, we call him, he take care.
Thank you Chairman Gil. Um, I'd like to introduce y'all uh this morning to two gentlemen I've had the honor of knowing for many, many years. Um Gary Mixon is the County Administrator for Sunkirk County. Uh he's been on more than three decades with Sunkirk County, uh and he's been a key leader in their penny for progress program since they began. Uh he's been directly involved in successful referendums, including the original referendum in two thousand eight. And then a twenty fourteen referendum renewal as well. Um and through these referendums, um they have built countywide improvements in infrastructure, public safety, recreation and economic development. Uh to the left of him Darren McCormick is the city manager, the city Sunkirk and also longtime public servant. Uh and finance city administration, he's played a central role in shaping city projects funded through the capital project sales tax, their penny for progress as they call it. Help identify priorities, guide planning and keep the public informed. And he's been also involved in the um two thousand eight, two thousand fourteen referendums that they successfully conducted. So um again, I encourage you to ask questions, these guys, that they know what they're doing, they know their community. Uh and they've got some life lessons to share with you about things that work. And what the public after numerous times, what they've learned about what the public needs to know. So with that, I'll remember you guys.
Vic, I guess I'll start um in the morning, everyone. Um yeah, we're we're happy to be here. Uh we've done this a few times around the state uh for some other counties. Um we've we've got some good experiences and some not so good experiences and we don't mind sharing all of it with you. We're here to answer any questions you might have. I guess it's been about a month ago uh that we actually came up and have with Dick and his team, a lot of your staff. And and really probably got a little bit more into the weeds than we proposed to get into today on the entire process. But we do have a PowerPoint that kind of help navigate the conversation to some degree and uh certainly will take it anywhere you want to take it from there. But uh we have, we've got, we've got some good experience and and um we 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 think we've come up with a pretty successful program. We've learned over the years, it's changed, uh times have changed as you all know. Uh when we originally started actually uh way back prior to between two thousand six actually. Uh when we had our first effort, it was not successful, we learned from that, went a different route. But um yeah, so we're we're here to answer questions basically and 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 we will get into a little bit of information. But as y'all want to flush out some of the areas, we'll certainly do so. Um with any and anything we can share with you. With that, I'll turn it over to Darren and after he says a few things, we'll jump into the PowerPoint and kind of help us with the flow.
I think what Gary said was right. I mean um we went from a place in two thousand six. I've been with the city since two thousand five, so thirty years, so kind of seen seen a lot there as well. Um but in two thousand six, the county tried an initiative just for for recreation and it was things that everybody wanted, but we didn't know how to get there. Um and we learned from others. Honestly, we we learned from Orangeburg. I mean, we found out, we went, had a meeting at their Chamber of Commerce and said um uh they were happy to help us. We went to them, they're happy to help us and they said, guys, we wish you had never come. But since you're here, we'll tell you. And they were kind of laughing, but what they were saying is a lot of times on the economic development side, it would, you know, we'd be competing or something. But they they said that sort of tongue in cheek, what they were saying is every community is different. The dynamics are very different. How many townships do you have in your county? Um obviously, you're the the leaders um and nothing happens unless county council says it happens, gets it as far as to the referendum. So uh the the weight is on your shoulders uh either way, um you're leading the charge. And I'm speaking as a as a city person, so it's vitally important, we work very, very closely with the county. And um and we learned that from Orangeburg and certainly uh when we were successful. Um you feel like there's growth within your community. A wise person said, we move at the speed of trust and a lot of times there's just no trust out there. So in opportunities, we can say there's nothing up our sleeves of just being honest. And what we found, and we'll speak to it a little bit, is it's okay to be different. It's okay to have opposing sides without being like, well, I'm against it. You got to move beyond that for the greater good of of your county. Um and that may lead you to pushing and going forth, or it may say we're not ready for that yet. So it's okay, but um it was very uncomfortable the first go around that we actually were dealing with people who didn't didn't agree. But it was worth holding in and getting through it for the greater good of the county, if that makes sense. So I just kind of open with that, glad to be here and really glad to answer any questions. Again, we we've been fortunate enough, blessed enough to do some things right. We've done some things and we've seen it wrong and we've been a part of that too. And as our mayor and chairman said, you know, you watch the game film when you lose. You figure out what you need to get right and and we were successful in two thousand twenty four, our third time. So um so yeah, we'll be glad to share any and everything with you that that hopefully could help this county.
Okay, with that, we'll jump into the slides and again, if you really want us to drill down and talk about it particularly, we're going to do so. But I'm going to kind of brush through a lot of this, particularly when we get into the uh.
You ready?
Yes. Uh so these are the major areas that we really want to talk about. Um I think it's important that you look at your community and we're going to make some comparisons of the way we look at our community. So um the the demographics are important, uh to know that. Uh again, this is, this is a campaign, this is, this is like an election. You've got to know how to play the game and know all the players and know the key talking points. And so demographics play an important part of that. Um and then we'll talk briefly about our our program since two thousand eight. I'll cover that really quickly because I don't think you want to get lost in there. But more so, what we really probably want to focus on is the process. I think that's really what you're looking at now. So we'll spend a little bit more time talking about some of the things that we did um related to the community, uh building the the team. Uh the whole marketing effort, we'll certainly flush that out. I think that's going to be very important for you to hear. And then some campaign strategies, I think, would would be very helpful for you to hear. And then, of course, the last thing we'll talk about is the timeframe because this thing is, but you're, I'm sure you recognize you're on the clock already. So uh we'll talk briefly about that and where you're uh where you're at, what stages need to take place and what order. So that's kind of the way we'll move through this if there's anything you want to speak specifically about. So yeah, let's talk a little bit about the demographics and I don't know how much, how many of you know about Sunkirk? But um we're we're somewhat in the middle as far as the size, uh the population and mass for the state of South Carolina. Um and square miles, city limits, um the town Mazeville, we've got two towns, small townships. Uh Mazeville and Pinewood, but overwhelming, the largest is that area there you see in the brown outline, that's the city of Sunkirk. It's centrally located in our county, that's another important factor too. Uh and again, that's just to give you an idea of what we looked at and how we worked our county. Um next slide. Uh so there, I just threw in the numbers that again, they may be off a little bit, but that's what they had online for you. Uh obviously, you've got just over twenty thousand in your county population, Wentzboro and then Wentzboro Mills. I think they're two different places. I'm sorry, I looked online and it looked like they were so. Um but uh yeah, you can look at just over five thousand there and then you've got two smaller um townships. Um again, it's important to know those because as you start developing projects and as you start developing your support, you've got to have uh you've got to have those folks involved. I don't care how small they are, they've got to be involved at the table and be a part of the conversation. So um that's quickly going through that piece of it. And okay, that's that's more of the the city of Sunkirk. What I want to really want to point out in this slide was if you drew a circle around the center of Sunkirk, you can see where the mass population of Sunkirk is located. Even though we have a a very rural part of our county, um the if you looked at just that circle, that represents uh ninety thousand of the, for that. So that we're are are very urban even though it's not on the city limits. So again, you need to, this this will come out later, but we looked at all of that and and we target that particularly when we start getting into the precinct type voting information. That's going to be very important. So again, just giving you that snapshot view. Um and uh election results. Yeah, so we've we've learned over the years and uh we went back and did a lot of homework. Darren says it's like looking at football film, you look at film and see what you did well and see what you could improve on. And when we look through the, it it is a campaign, this is an election, make no mistake about it, you need to know this information. Um so we actually went back and looked at each one of our precincts and each one uh determined how the vote count went. I'm sure you know that uh with the election, it's, we we were looking at precincts whether they voted in favor of it or opposed it. That was one way of looking at it, but also remember that every vote counts. So even though you may not have won that precinct, every vote counted toward the the total. So uh keeping that margin small in areas and then seeing where you can build on it became an important strategy. And again, a lot of this was kind of a look back. Um you can see how many we, and and this will hold for each one of our elections. We didn't do it the first election, this was something we started doing in the latter election, so we learned from that. And and truthfully, a lot of the information um because of technology was so much easier to gather uh later on in the in the later election. So again, not not getting lost in in each one of those, as you can see, we compared eight, fourteen and twenty two. And next slide. Um and you, one thing I need to point out, you can see that the uh in the red over there, the city and the county differences, we were looking at that. Because part of the conversation, in particular the last one, and even to some degree the one we didn't pass, it became an urban versus rural conversation. And you may have those dynamics here in your community, I don't know, but it did in Sunkirk. And so we wanted to start looking at those in comparison when we were looking at these precincts. Each one of the, each one of the penny series, it it passed in what we would call the city limits. Each each precinct would pass. That rural area, particularly in the one that was not successful, dropped off. And and we looked at that and learned from that. And and we'll talk a little bit more in detail about some of the things we did to help minimize that impact on the on the last penny. But yeah, that again, going through those um and then to two thousand twenty two. This is the one that we didn't pass. Um it it really, you can see the difference, four hundred and sixty eight, four hundred and sixty eight votes, different uh but loss. And nearly just shy of thirty thousand people that voted, so very narrow margin. So uh one of the big takeaways afterwards, and I'll let Darren kind of jump in here, is that we recognize that even though it didn't pass, we still had a lot of support for the penny. I mean, that's a narrow margin. There were things that that we know didn't, that 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 we we basically took for granted. Well, we've already been through two successful pennies. And uh we just couldn't believe that people didn't know what the penny was in our community. We've already uh raised over a hundred and fifty million dollars in two series of pennies and and have a lot of positive publicity. We just could not believe that people didn't know what the penny was. Uh so and we weren't hearing anything negative either, that was the other side of it. We weren't on hearings. It was it was crickets. So we said, okay, everybody gets it, right? We found out afterwards and of course followed up that things that were done that weren't done and stuff like that. Um but I'll let Darren kind of jump in on this because I think we've really had a lot of work in this.
So just just to review, of course, um that once, once county council, if you choose to, after the committee is formed and the projects. And you choose to push it forward to the referendum. Um the one thing that everybody has to know is you cannot spend any money, any public money to influence the outcome of an election. Really, really important to know what education is, this is what's being talked about, you can talk about it, you have to talk about it. But so what we did in Sunkirk is we worked with our Chamber of Commerce and they took it in and ran with the advertising. So we could go to unlimited meetings of rotary, church groups, anything and talk about it on our own time, that that's that's good. It is very much needed. But our Chamber of Commerce, who had been successful previously before two thousand twenty two, um we had new leadership there, they kind of took it for granted. Not a single county council member was asked to come to a meeting, not a single delegation member. Gary wasn't, I wasn't, we thought everybody was happy. We didn't push ourselves on them, you know, because there's a speakers bureau, we can talk about that. But the bottom line is, they were too dependent on social media. And we'll do social media, well, as we know, some people are all about social media. Many of us want to fill paper and talk to people and and know those things too. So you know your constituents better than anyone and what's needed. So it was just a really big miss. And then uh after it didn't pass, we were shocked. I mean, we thought we had, we had passed it the second time with some sixty percent. Um the first time, like fifty one, we just, hallelujah, we passed it. The next time, because we had those successes, it passed better. And then we had this setback where we had no opposition formed against us. Like what, early on, if you remember, it was pre T party, what was the first, I don't know. We we had like major us against them and it was a battle, uh which kept us on our toes, probably helped us pass it the first time. But this time, there's no organ organized, as far as we know, every now and then you'd see a little sign in somebody's yard going, I'm against it. Um but it wasn't anything big, but but after the election, I went to my wife's office and there were some ladies in the office and they were like. Oh, we thought it was an additional penny, like uh one more, right? So we voted against it and the question wasn't exactly clear. It was, it was a calamity of errors that that took, we missed it by less than five hundred. So um so we learned from that, so much so that the chamber helped the next time, but there was a new organization that that pushed it. But again, you can't spend public money to influence the outcome of an election. I mean, uh you just can't, but.
And and that, that would include staff time, anything that uses public resources. So so we can, you have to be very careful about making sure that once something like this starts, if it starts, that we're very much on top of it.
And and I was asked as a city, because we have some of our uh public relations folks and stuff. That volunteer on these boards that we meet during the day and they were like, wait a minute, they work for you and your public? And I was like, they're also exempt. So if they want to take an hour off in the middle of the day and go do this, they have my blessing to do it. So it's one of those things that if we can, you wouldn't talk about it from the dais, please vote yes. Um because that's technically your own the public time when you're doing it. But speaking on your own or at, like I said, any kind of public meeting, absolutely is necessary. Because you as leaders, if if the public doesn't know how you feel and they've elected you to lead them, that's a major problem. So going back to Orangeburg when it was first passed, Orangeburg had sixteen different towns and cities in Orangeburg County, right? The genius they did is they all agreed, there's a longer story, I'll save you from it today. But they all agreed that we'll give each entity a percentage of the pot of money by population. Because the unincorporated area got the lion's share. The county got the lion's share, not only going to run it, but so everybody won. Well, what that caused way back when, in the early two thousands, is sort of a picture of everybody holding hands going like this. All sixteen towns and cities and the county. People had never seen that, that's why, how it passed the first time there. Um so we brought that back and again, the dynamics of each each community is different. Our our county didn't agree to that because we would have got a pretty big chunk too, but we, you learn. You know, you got to, you got to crawl before you walk and walk before you run type things. But um I think it's just important to know, uh keep the main things the main things. But it it's um it's very interesting. I would have lost every dollar I had, so I don't bet that we would have passed in two thousand twenty two. But take nothing for granted. I mean, you fight just like you do for your election, you take nothing for granted. People that didn't vote for you one year, you want to fight for them to to vote for you if at all possible. Knowing there's going to be some people that you can't fix, we understand that, I mean. But again, all you need is fifty plus one percent, so.
Yeah, I I want to kind of brush over the election stuff again unless you want to drill more into that. But you can, you can just by the slides and and Vic's got this, you can tell, we've we've really put a lot of work into that piece of it. Um again, because we recognize that that this is an election and if you're, if you, mostly you run for your office, you know these kind of, this is the kind of work you do on a grand scale. Um and and of course, the difference here too is you're selling yourself in your, in your campaign. This, you're selling a concept, an idea, a project, to move the community forward, that's what you're selling. And not everybody's going to have that same vision and that's where you've got to give, get all the information out there. Don't run or hide from anybody that's supposed to it. Please engage with them. Because I can't tell you how many people that that I spoke with um from the folks that were anti um capital spending tax, capital project spending tax. That once they heard the full story of what it means and how it's done, so I didn't know that area, I mean, I'm a hundred percent behind that. Some of my most conservative friends, I'm talking about the business community that we mentioned getting the chamber involved. That would have been unheard of, but the the leadership in the chamber, once we sat and talked with them and said, this is the best way to go. Then the lightbulb woman came over and said, you're absolutely right, this is the best thing that we can do. Now we're going to support it, we're going to raise money and back it. So I mean, that's the transition that happens, but but we'll get in a little bit, I'll get, not only elections.
I will, I will mention this, if you look when we were successful the first time in two thousand eight, everybody remember what happened in two thousand eight? We were, we were going headlong into the economy is.
In recession.
In recession. So I mean, it was not, not good at all. And in the midst of that, that, we had opposition like, are you guys stupid to do this? But it was investing in ourselves. And so investing in ourselves was a big deal because when the economy did slow down, we were actually putting money. There was local contractors working on some of these projects. It gave us life during that otherwise slow time. So it really is a question of, do we, if we don't do it, we know what nothing looks like. If we do these projects, and we'll talk about later too, you know, you may be all for some project and totally against. Or your little township may be against what you're doing, but all for what they're doing. Either we win together or we lose together. So we have to find a way to to deal with that. So Darren.
One thing, again, thank y'all for being here. Um one thing that I'm hearing pretty consistently, and maybe if you can keep this in the back of your mind as you go through this, it might, you you may be able to give us some tips is. We have, you know, Fairfield County is a small population county. And we get the highest per capita income tax revenue of any county in South Carolina. We're like number one or two, I hear that a lot. The other thing is, we had more employees per capita than most other counties, we hear, I hear that a lot. We just went through a reassessment this year, our property values went up. And you know, since two thousand eight, property value's gone up nicely, so a lot of us are capped at fifteen percent. Plus, we had an eight mil um increase in taxes for specific capital, you know, equipment, police vehicle, EMS, that sort of thing. So I'm hearing, you guys, you got all this money now, where's that going? Why do you need more? So that's something I'm hearing very consistently from people across all the spectrum.
So so that's very good. I will throw this out there, that that early on, um my my mayor, um I have a a new mayor. A different one between the first two and then the last. But the first one was um even his father-in-law said, he's never met a tax he didn't like, you know, and then then he's very conservative. So we've been on both sides, but the the point is um what I tell my most conservative friends is. Things like the police radios, the county and the city, we're going to have to spend millions of dollars, which would affect both of our tax bases. So if you live in the city, it's going to hit you twice, the the county's bill is going to have to go up half too. I mean, we, it's got to work, right? Radios for public safety have to work. So I saw it as a tax avoidance. Anybody, I'd have a personal call, I was like, look, forget everything on the list, but this one, it's thirteen million dollars for the county for us to do. That's how big it was, with EMS, fire, police, sheriff, everyone. And I said, I I don't know much, but I know numbers, know them pretty well. So that's bad. So if you're the most conservative, you're against everything, vote for this penny, right? So you kind of turn it around and then and it's just true. So it's like Gary said earlier, just be willing to have a conversation and you'll be surprised, there'll be people from on opposite ends. But depending on the conversation, you're going to come right back to the middle because it's going to be better for your county. Um even in, you can't, early on, there was some pressure to like sell your soul and say, if we vote for this thing, you got to promise never to raise anything again. No, because we don't know it in our brains. I mean, it it's just, it doesn't happen. All we can say is, we will be better off. If we, if we do all of our work and present a good question, county council pushes it to the referendum, we'll be better off if this thing passes. Um you may not like every project, but we will all be better off. Even if you're coming from a conservative point of view, or hey, we really need things that we don't have but for this money.
Thank you. Uh I figured that's where we go because that's what we we ran, that was our big opposition, you just nailed it. What you're talking about is exactly what we ran into and the way Darren mentioned this, where we, you can have a one-on-one. I mean, I I bet some of these folks you would consider really good friends, I mean, that's what's going on me, they said, Gary, you're the county administrator, tell me why we need this? I see y'all got this, and we do the same thing, we bond out separately and and uh do a capital bonds for our for our sheriff vehicles and other buildings and stuff like, all that's happening. But um these, with these creeping, when all these pennies pass, it's only three hundred million dollars in capital investment in the Sunkirk community. You can't tax yourself into that, you just can't. And there's some things you have to be liberating. You can spend every penny you're taking, you know, at three eighty eight, right, where I'm sure your council, you know all about that, you're limited on what you can do in that region. You could go to the max for that and never pay for those radios. You say, we we, once, once you put it into those terms with people, that's the thing. Yeah, probably is. And then you'll see the other side, that's why we'll get into the buckets of projects, so you'll see the kind of stuff. We try to get a broad range, so some people are going to be wholeheartedly, for example, public safety. Absolutely, spend all the money you need on public safety, but other, the stuff is frivolous. But then there's going to be other folks saying, and we ran into this, at a, at a big chamber meeting, we had a couple hundred people there and somebody said, well, you know what? Uh it's already y'all's responsibility with our tax dollars to buy fire trucks and police cars and stuff like that. So why should we? Yeah, but that's only one piece of it. We get these other things. In my opinion, and in my background, unlike Darren's, in the finance, mine was recreation parks. And I know what quality of life means to a community. And and if you're trying to recruit industry, you're trying to recruit business, you're trying to recruit residents. That's what I call the extras that you can do in a community that separates you from everybody else. And if you look at the type of projects we've done, I know we're pretty successful at that. But um again, there's, it depends on the person, the conversation you need to have. But I I can promise you that the numbers will win in your favor. But anyway, I'll, I'll ask a question to you.
I I wanted to address the the issue of uh districts. There's seven districts in there in that county. So you're going to have, and what I've seen, being on the council this in a year, is that each county council member focuses on their own district. And what their own district needs. Now, what Mr. Uh County Councilman Govak said is absolutely true for his district. That does apply to my district. So you have these, you have this dilemma. And I think it's very important that we have this discussion about these districts and what they need and what people are saying. Now in my district, I've been talking about the county tax. If it gives the people in my district what they need, they're all going. They have no questions, I mean, and there's specific things they want. So when we're having these discussions about this penny tax, how is it going to benefit each and every district? Now, each and every one of us can talk about what we need and what our people need in each district. How do we bring all that together that will benefit everybody in the county? Because as the county, as you look at the county, some districts are getting more than others. And that is a problem for other districts who are getting nothing, who seem to be be being ignored. But um I'm very conscious of the fact that this effort that we may undertake. Has to involve representatives from every single district talking about the bare knuckle issues of what this report bring about. And um we can't ignore anybody's uh input. Um the fact of the matter is, is that, let's be honest, we have districts, some districts more wealthier than others. We have districts, some districts more wealthier than others. And some feel that I don't need the penny tax, you know, to bring about change or additions in the, in my district. But what about those others? So, um, I want to be able to understand how this penny tax is going to serve the purpose for the entire county and not just certain parts of the county. So that is going to require further discussion, deeper discussion, particularly from, from my standpoint. Um, people live in my district, you know, who seem to be ignored often. With this, you know, and they are, and they are attached to this and they are looking at this and they are conscious of what we are about to do or may do. And there are a lot of questions out there, um, for, for each district about, you know, how is my council going to represent me in this matter? So the question is, and, and it's not really a question, but it's, um, if you can help us gather this information, gather this, uh, uh, um, uh, uh, way of transgress, uh, traversing the, uh, the issue, that will be successful. Um, because again, if we gotta vote tomorrow, this report will be all void. Because I'm already talking about it and what the possibilities of having it and utilizing, um, you know, the greatness of it and what it would do for them.
That's a great question. And we have dealt with it, um, more so in recent. And that's not new, right? I mean, and again, I can make up the beer county in some ways, even though the numbers don't line up, but kind of the other parts do. Uh, you've got, again, a very rural area and you've got a more urbanized area. And that's just a common, common issue. The question, I think, and this is where it becomes a little challenging. Obviously, I, I don't know how much, you know, we, we can add, talk about how much money you anticipate raising. And I don't even think y'all started digging into the types of projects. But, but it's just human nature, right? For people to know what's in it for me. Especially when you're asking for money from somebody. And that's kind of what the tax is, right? So it's just human nature. Don't run from that. Expect that and, and, and try to address that with them. But the bigger and the harder question is, it, it can be for me, but it doesn't have to be exactly for me. For example, I'll give you a couple of good ones. The first penny, when we passed it, that was part of the theme. We recognized that the counties, so in the makeup, the city couldn't pass the election. I don't care if they all, they couldn't pass it by themselves and neither could the county. It just wasn't, the numbers weren't there. So we know we had to balance this thing. And as we were looking at projects, particularly in the rural areas, one of the things that we were just transitioning our county was, uh, rural recreation. And that's where I was on it early on, oh eight, um, through this process. And so we were looking at, at building, uh, uh, opening up a couple of rural, um, recreation community centers. And they were very much rural, rural populated, populated areas. And, uh, that's what some of the folks wanted. They wanted some programs for their kids after school and they wanted programs for the seniors. Uh, and so we built these community centers. In the big scheme of things, they want a lot of money. I want to say at the time, we were billing these for three hundred and fifty, they were five hundred thousand dollars. Uh, so again, fast forward, now you're talking about thirty dollars. We've got a couple of those in there. But anyway, we weren't dead. And we were, at that time, I think, planning them generates somewhere around seventy-five, eighty, seventy-five, seventy-six million dollars. But again, we spent about, uh, less than two million dollars in those areas. But going to the point of what these folks wanted, they just wanted to see something that they were heard and they were doing something for them. And you know, Darren, do we matter, right? And again, that's all that we did. We didn't, didn't, and we'll talk about fifty years where we actually went out and had these formal conversations, but that's all we did. And Darren mentioned earlier, we passed by fifty-one percent, one percent. Well, guess where that one percent vote came from? Those folks that were in these rural communities. They've gotten at a little community center for less than two million dollars, it was seventy-nine million dollars. That, that's why I'll go back to every vote counts. Now, now, did two million dollars compared to the other stuff? No, if they start looking at the home, you got your million dollars. Well, yeah. But without it, you didn't get the two million dollars, right? You didn't get your community center. If you voted no, because you looked at the picture, you stepped back and said, okay, am I really getting my ideas out of this? And they got greedy or, I think greedy is not a good term, but you feel what I'm saying? It's all relative. If Darren said, we all win or we all lose.
And, and I think if, if you choose to move forward and you are successful, the thing you gain is much better than you think because your community, and you always have people that, that, us against them, you're urban, we're rural, we're over here, whatever the issue is. But you build confidence that you can work together. And maybe there's some requested projects, there will be, that don't make it on this first list. And if there's an honesty to working together, then you can say, hey, that might bump up higher if we get to do this again. What we did, we had some people at the table who wanted some work on a, a historic corridor. It didn't make the first list. And right at the last minute, it was real tense because we were like, they're gonna blow this thing up because this project, but it was too much money and it didn't fit the first project list. Um, but we said, hey, we'll take this serious moving on. So basically, if the penny pays for things, it expedites things other people are waiting on. If your road gets paved, if you go there, then you're, well, my road didn't get paved. I'm voting against it. Wait a minute. Yours with the regular accounting money, it just moved higher on the list. So I mean, there's conversations that we educate ourselves about, but I think working together, um, it gets to be a numbers game. We could be morally right and it never pass. So we've got to find a way, if council wants to do it, to get it passed. And that means the council as a whole, you will put priorities. Like what do we need as a county first? Um, and we as staff are always super sensitive to our districts. You know, our, we feel like our goal, we don't get political, we're apolitical, but we work for, for you. And what we want to do is make sure every time you want to run again, that you get re-elected, right? Because you're investing your time in the whole county. We want it to continue to get better and better. It's, it's never gonna be perfect, but that trust thing really does help. So just bringing it all, there's some other projects. Um, what we found is when the first penny passed, every time, then it, it made other projects happen. Maybe some hospitality money would do a project. Everybody said, Penny's doing this. Penny, Penny, Penny got credit for doing everything. It didn't. There was a finite list that we had to do, but, but it was good. We were like, hey, don't, it's fun. Let people be confident about the community. That's a good thing.
And if I can make a quick point too, um, as, as these questions and conversations come up, one of the really important things to remember about a potential tax here in Fairfield is how much of our penny would come from people who do not live in the county. And in, in, in our case, because of the interstate, we, we generate a lot more money off of that penny in the capital than other places would. So we're getting closer to fifty percent of our penny sales tax money comes from people who don't live there. That's free money. And, and, and it's a very difficult to find a conservative or liberal, who doesn't like free, you know, I mean, when, when you can logically explain why you get the benefit, but you don't pay for it. And then the other thing, Don, to, um, to the question is that it, right now, it, it, it'll generate about three point one, three point two million dollars a year. By the time the penny would end, it'd be closer to four million a year. Um, in order, i- if, if we could find three million dollars of a budget to cut that easily, then the same people would say, well, just cut my taxes then and, and let's not worry with this. It, it's, so I mean, if you can find the money that easy, you know, to cut that kind of money out of the spending, I mean, it sure will be that. We always can have that conversation, you know, I don't think there's a government out there that doesn't have some aspect that they can go in. But three million dollars of cutting is something that's just really beyond the ability. That hits then into your EMS, that hits into your fire, that hits into your, your law enforcement. Cause that for sixty, seventy, ten or eleven cuts, you know, so.
Yeah, I understand that. I would say, you know, supporting your, your point about people from outside the county coming in, you look on your tax bill now, and we get that credit now through our one percent local option sales tax that was put in two thousand six, whatever. And you think about that money you're getting back and you think, you know, you multiply that by a hundred. Did I spend that much money in Fairfield County on stoplights? And I don't think so. So.
Again, that's a business.
And you do know, you as council members, you know how the county government works. You know what the needs are. You know what the overhead is. I mean, things that your constituents never will, even if you wanted to sit down and teach them, they just like, ah, they, they won't. So, but I do think that it is super important to understand that, that in twenty twenty-two, when we dropped the ball and, and didn't pass, ours actually stopped, right? It didn't continue. It stopped. And then two years later, no one, I'm talking about the poorest person in our community could say, boy, I really got some extra money because of the penny. I, I'm not paying this penny. No one. You couldn't feel it. So it has massive upside potential and absolutely no money, extra money in your pocket. Well, you bought an extra, bought an extra hamburger this month. It, it wasn't that much. I mean, it's just massive how it adds up to the benefit of your county at the same time. It's, it's not, it's not a good trade-off to give it back. I mean, and we learned it. It's just a hard lesson to learn.
Well, Don, Vic stole my thunder, I guess. They probably, what, what I was gonna talk about, that I've had a number of people complain since our tax notices came out, uh, about the tax increases. Of course, told them, you know, we have village increase and reassessment in the same year. So then I was, I was thinking about this thing and I'm saying, and, uh, so now is this, or is this the right time? Now, it's been hit hard, you know, I know it'll be next year, but you know, it's, it's new. So, but you, but you gotta promote it now.
It's your message, right?
And, and so, uh, and then the other thing was what, what, you know, about a lot of the money's generated from outer county, the outer state and, and all that also. But you just wondered. So the first time is for a six-year span and then from there on is, is it eight years? Is that seven?
The, the law's changed on that now. So it's eight years. We, we.
It's eight years.
But you can do any variation. That's up to you. But, but we chose the eight year. It was seven years in the previous because we lost a year and, and failed. It was up to eight years. So I don't know if the, again, I published a premise this, we're, we're not the, uh, Southland Department of Revenue's legal authority on penny sales tax and what you can tax, can't tax and all that. Um, but yeah, I, I know we're at eight years and, and the reason we were able to do it is because we had to start over again.
Is that, is that the, the max?
I think it is fast. Now, there's some conversation in Columbia right now to change that and get it more time, but I don't believe it's, it's past.
It does in the sense that it ends, it sunsets either when you hit the, the, the number of years or you finish the project. So the project's finished in six years or seven years or five years and it ends there. So it's not required to collect, you won't collect that beyond the, the ending of the project. So that's kind of the magic ending date of it. It's, you can say it's eight years, but if you bring in more money, it ends in seven years. We can't just keep collecting money. It goes away.
Based on that list of projects.
Yes, right. That would be on the.
And that's an obstacle for you too, because people can, they say, oh, government wants your taxes. It gets stuck and it just never goes away.
Right.
Well, that's where you gotta really educate them. The law clearly says it's not that way. And oh, well, they said they're gonna spin it on this, but they do, the law's very clear on that too. So that's part of the education process that you can have with people. And again, we, we speak, we're speaking probably from a little bit different seat now because we've been through it successfully. So the conversation, a little different. But that's exactly what the conversation was when we were trying to pass the first one.
Yeah, we heard that a lot. You're just gonna, we're gonna do this, you're just gonna spin it on what the law keeps like, no, it's against the law. Like it's exactly this list and nothing else.
And that works against you too, cause then you get the other folks saying, well, yeah, but can you add this project again? You know, yeah, sorry, no, it wasn't. It's voted on the referendum. We can't do that. And, and again, it's all about building that trust. And you will over time build that trust, but yeah, that's a good point.
But it does build confidence. Let's say back to, um, um, your question about, hey, our, our district really hasn't seen, hopefully there's something on the penny. But you may say, hey, we're going all public safety. So it's not really, it's not really district by district, like a building being done in every project. Cause obviously you gotta maintain it and then you gotta look at a future operational. So it's really, really good if it's something you're gonna spend money on anyway, or you gotta upgrade something so people feel the value in it. But it does open up opportunities as you as a council, if the penny gets passed, you're doing these other projects. Maybe your annual budget, you're like, well, we could go ahead and do this project that otherwise would have took, taken ten years to get around to it. It feels like it never does. We've got some new council members. And, um, we just opened up a community park and he's asking about the next phase of it already. And I'm like, slow down, speed racer. You know, it used to take twenty years to do this, but, but now, so we're, we're very fortunate that things are happening faster. But you can't discount the community's goodwill when they're seeing good things happen. And it's not hurting them. I mean, everybody's afraid of attacks. I get it, you know, I'm pretty conservative myself. But at the same time, you know, we want to see where we live and get better.
And to point out one more thing that we could want to, if we, if we decide to do this, take advantage of is the fact that a significant amount of these purchases that would be made for the reconstruction of these nuclear plants would be subject to sales taxes. So you're getting into potentially huge volumes of, which could, could let us collect enough money in four years to build our projects versus eight years. So I mean, you know, again, there's so many things like that. And, and to the points about, uh, as Darren was saying, that, you know, the public would tell us, you know, well, how do we know you're not gonna spend it on something else? Well, the county and the state did that. And they're probably going to jail, you know, because they collected the money and they did not follow that list. They got caught. So, so it, they're very real teeth to the law. So it's got to be spent the way that the public has told them.
I wanna jump forward. I know we're kind of going down in here, but it's a good conversation. You can get past the, um, the funding comparison. So this, this helps you, I guess, we'll, we'll start a conversation about projects and kind of goes back to what you're talking about. How you determine which projects are gonna be won. And everybody does this a little bit differently. I should say that. All we can talk about is how we've done it in Sumter. Um, and I know, uh, the county council and, and in our situation, city council, uh, Sumter City Council and then the townships, Pinewood and Mayville, we went to each one of those governing bodies and said, okay. Um, and, and in each scenario, we kind of laid out approximately how much money based on some projections of you would have to spend and say, okay, give us some projects that kind of fall in this category. It's gotta meet the state law, what's eligible, that's first and foremost. And then present those projects. Um, and then we kind of knew before we ever got, we'll talk about the penny commission, cause that's obviously another part of it. We already knew, because we as a council, we had executive session matters of, of meetings. And the reason we do that, because there's some projects that's gonna be mentioned, that's gonna be land related, uh, property related, and you don't want that getting out in the public too soon. Um, another reason behind that, just quite honestly, you just, you, you need to, there're gonna be projects eliminated before they ever come out. And so that's a hard conversation with the council. And it's just important to have those, those meetings. But you as a body are gonna determine that. And then once you determine what that is, then you gotta be a hundred percent behind it. Um, we, we, we've done it both ways. We've had some fallout and it's not, not pretty. It was a situation where very much, I didn't get all I think I should have got from my district. It's hard. That's a hard conversation. Cause then you're fighting for your constituents. You're fighting for your constituents. But at the end of the day, again, if, if, if y'all come out half split on this, it's not gonna succeed. It just, that's been our experience. You can, you can take some, it doesn't have to be all kumbaya, positive conversation about every little thing. But the positive message is, we only move forward if we move forward together. And if we got, you know, oh yeah, I didn't get all I wanted this time, that's fine. You know, you're representing your people. But I'm gonna work hard and we did get something and we're gonna work hard and we're gonna get more next time. You know, it's, it's part of this. You know, we gotta, we gotta keep moving this. And, and I don't want to get into specifics, but we, we had a very similar situation. Um, where one councilman, uh, he was new. He was on the outside. He, he wasn't part of the other county. So he didn't even really know how to process work. Um, didn't know how we all kind of worked together, come, come up with a project list. And it was all, all focused about him and his one district. And, and he had some good projects and he had a lot of projects, but he had some really good projects. And, and as council worked together, they came up with a, if we're gonna call it a compromise, they came, came up with something, okay, then we'll get this. This, if this is your primary focus, your primary number one, then we are gonna give this some serious attention. It was, it was paving county roads in his district. That's what he wanted. As he said, it was the number one thing for his. And, and it hasn't ended up. Of course, other districts got things too, but he got a line of share of the roads that are in that district. That was number one. And then we also, when he told him, when he goes out and talks to people about these radios, everybody got this first. And that's not a district question. That's telling you why. That was number one. And then we also, when he told him, when he goes out and talks to people about these radios, everybody got his first one, that's not a district question, that's telling you why. You identify those kind of things, say, yeah, and and he was able to go back to his constituents and his community and say, hey, look at all the stuff on the penny yet, and this one is a hundred and twenty-five million dollars. But and and all, they probably had somewhere around six, eight million dollars of projects in his district.
And and the truth is, Gary can't say it, but I can, but he fought us the whole way during the ele, leading up to the election. Because, you know, some people go overboard and and um, and it ends up, this is the beauty of you being a county council and caring about the entire county. If that project list goes forward, you know it's gonna make your county better. Even if somebody's sitting there throwing rocks at you the whole time, if it passes, you're gonna benefit, you really will. At the same time, it gets back to that trust, you'll see people for what they were. There's some people that say, I'm for it, but secretly they're against it. Like, no, let your yes BS and your no be no on this, but hopefully be yes and and get it done, so. Um, it's just, especially with the nuclear plant's getting done, your county could look completely different in twenty years, right? So you're the council who can be ahead of that if you want, you know, and and it's hard. I mean, what you guys, and thank you, by the way, for what you do. Gary and I, like you said, we've been out a long time, but I make sure to tell my mayor and council, I have no role conflict. I know who the bosses are, I have seven of them, and my staff, all six hundred of us, we know who the bosses are. And we tell new employees, if mama's not happy, nobody's happy. You know what that means? Here, if the mayor and council's not happy, nobody's happy, and they understand. You know, everybody knows what their place is, but if we win, we're gonna all win, and that's important.
The the list is, I can revisit that another time, you can see we have a plan. On project development, we can talk a little bit about that, and I won't go into the older years, we kind of hit on a lot of this already. But um, one thing that did change in 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 two thousand and six, two thousand and eight, uh, that's when we were, we were starting out. That that was done, I wouldn't say necessarily in Salona, but it was done with a small group of council members, both city and county council members. And Darren was city manager at the time, so he can speak to this even better, but they kind of came together because we were trying to figure out how to do this. Um, and and the project list was was again relatively small. Uh, later years, we actually took the effort out into the county, we started having rural community meetings and trying to hear from those folks what their priorities were. Um, and and not surprisingly, it, we pretty much knew what that list was gonna be. I mean, if we're good at what we do and you're good at what you do, you already know that, you don't need to have, you're already hearing it, right? Now, it might come together and publicly say that it goes in a rick or all that kind of stuff, but we had very little surprises from all of those community meetings, what their needs were, um, and how we would like to address it. So it 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 was, it had value certainly, because they felt like they were engaged and they were. But to say that it had a huge impact on the list, it really didn't, uh, in my opinion, and Darren was dealing with the same stuff. It 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 didn't change, it may have, may have switched some of the priority listing, but it certainly didn't change. Because we, again, we knew what the needs were, we were, we were, we were addressing the rural areas, like I said, with community centers, fire stations, fire equipment, roads, um, and and we'll, we'll get into that bucket list in a few minutes, but that's how we addressed the rural. Urban area's a little bit different because we, you, so here's, here's one issue, and this goes back to the one council. We'd love to have a major community park, and it's just one of that, in fact, one of the aquatics center. And uh, sounds great, but it's not a rural area, and uh, it was kind of almost built and they'll come, we didn't have the infrastructure to even build it. Didn't have the water and sewer. To the point being, it's heavy realistic.
I I think um, I I think Gary's dead right about that, is um, some things, again, it's it's not totally a new thing, it fits in the fabric of what you do day in and year in and year out. Uh, what makes the community better and in the county better. The city, w- we are a little bit different, uh, we hear from our folks every couple of weeks, they beat on us regularly. Um, so we have community development block grant meetings out in the community, so we pretty much know when we go out in the community, it's gonna be, I need streetlights here, people are speeding there, we we kind of know, so but, so what we do in in a smaller area, Gary is more appropriate for for you guys, but we're paying attention to the mayor and council, we know what's on their minds. We're constantly watching and listening to our council because they're leading us. And if they're like, man, I really wish we could do this, you know, w- we already have it on the list, so we sort of push it forward and and we literally do the councilman's area about the districts. So we have wards, district, same thing, and there's six of them, and then the mayor serves at large. So when we do the projects, we're cognizant of, there's no area of town that's missing, right? We do that during a normal year too, um, as best we can, so um, we we just don't, we sort of have deficits for our council members to understand that somebody can say, you just left us out, right? So we're we're always thinking that way, best we can, but it might be a quality of life, or it might be a, you know, infrastructure issue. Uh, but we have to know what's important to our, to our constituents.
Vic, may I ask?
This last, before we jump in, that last bullet, you're gonna, you're gonna come up with a number, and we should talk to Vic about this, with the uh, D O R is gonna give you a number. We learned the hard way, don't go with their estimate. They they.
Don't what now?
Don't go with their estimate, they're they're gonna, they're gonna be higher, and they they'll explain, it's got so much percentage growth and all that kind of stuff. And again, first penny Darren mentioned, that's been a recession hit. We didn't generate the revenue that we anticipated, um, because we went with their number, we missed about about two million dollars.
And two, I had a water plant that was being built for industry, and it was four million at the time, it was the first half of the plant, and and the two million short since we were the last project, we're the ones that didn't get the two million, so is is it educational, you know, because at first, again, you're not really, you know, we say we trust one another, but it's kind of like we're made to hold hands at first until you start working together. But we knew we were going to bond market to finish the the thing out, so we sort of had a contingency, we didn't know we'd be two million short, but uh, what ended up happening is the city just borrowed more in that 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 water and sewer bond to finish it. But it taught us, and we learned, and each time you just get a little smarter and learn a little bit more. Um, what's important to know, you're the fiscal, once it's done, once it's passed, I mean, county's in charge. I can say that full well as a as a city manager here, so it behooves us to work closely. Like, I want the county's projects doing very well, I want our projects to do well. But again, everything is just keeping that credibility, that trust. We tell somebody something, we wanna be able to say, hey, hadn't lied to you yet, this is it. Even though it's new ground, you gotta just be careful, so don't overextend, don't overpromise. I'd rather overproduce than than underpromise, but the promise is the list.
So the balance of that is, um, you love to get a lot of projects on the list, that's important, because you know, projects mean votes. But you gotta be careful too, that you don't overestimate your projects, and inevitably, I don't care how good forecasting you're doing. Uh, Vic and I had this long conversation about how much engineering work do you do up front and all that? You're still forecasting eight years out, and y'all know, especially in this economy, how challenging it is to get a project right, I mean, it's changing almost monthly now. Uh, so it's very difficult, so you you don't wanna throw on those extra projects, because at the end of the day, what you put on that ballot, you better be prepared to make it happen, because if not, you've lost all your credibility for even in the future. So have another backup plan, as Darren mentioned, just in case, we we had that after with our judicial center. Um, we had to add some money into that to make it, but but we couldn't put that extra cost into penny, because we'd eliminated some very important projects, so we took that on. That's a decision y'all gotta make, I just wanna make sure y'all are aware of that.
So for instance, what you don't wanna do is add millage because you had a shortfall. That would be a kick in the teeth that nobody wants, but at the same time, you do have to prepare, because, I mean, since COVID, our water plants have doubled. We're not talking about ten percent, we're talking about a hundred percent increase in costs. So, you know, you have, really have to be careful of of that.
Yeah, I just have a question for Vic, where are we on our project development list?
Uh, soft date tomorrow, all of our departments are sending us um, the information they've gathered, pricing, how it's gonna affect the community, the county as a whole, so. And then December the fifth, we'll review what we get tomorrow, and then kind of sit down with them, and then December fifth, we'll have a really good idea of what each department's wanting to go on to take in.
Is that specifically county focused, or are we considering, to Carl's point, Jenkinsville, Ridgeway and Winsboro? Well, this, well, this initial is just county focused, but um, certainly talking to to Winsboro, for example. Chris is is very aware of this, and and he's been told, and they've also told in in public meetings, um, that the mayor of Jenkinsville was at, that they need to be starting that. If the council shows interest in moving forward, then I would start reaching out to Ridgway, to Jenkinsville, and trying to help them, because I understand that that their resources are are less than ours. So trying to help them come up with some projects that they can propose as well, so so we would support them, but right now, the starting point is internal. Just so y'all can get an idea of what internally staffed things, and then y'all would of course have that input of like, well, I don't see anything in my district. Okay, well, let's talk about that, and what do we need to do? Thank you.
You, you asked, um, one of those things that I've come to learn, that there is no awareness, Jenkinsville.
Yeah.
When we talk about Jenkinsville, it's like two, two entities. We have the town of Jenkinsville, and then we have Jenkinsville. And I think we need to think about that when we're talking about this and all of this. Because what happens in the town of Jenkinsville doesn't necessarily serve Jenkinsville. So it's it's important, and I've been doing a uh, a lot of educating people in the town of Jenkinsville and Jenkinsville, helping them understand what is the difference. And although the town of Jenkinsville may be doing this, doing this, which doesn't serve everybody else in Jenkinsville. So it's important, and I think, and and I'm I'm glad I'm bringing that up to the council so that they can understand it as well. We got two entities, and one is only concerned with those eighty-seven people in that limit boundary, but then we have Jenkinsville, which the county serves. So I think that is, I I think education is so very important in this whole process and how we operate what we're doing. Because everybody's not gonna be genuine about what is going on and how this process works, so forth and so on. So I think as a a a, the county council person from that district, it's important that I be very honest with people about how this is working and who is working for. Because everybody is not going to be honest in this whole process. We have the town of Jenkinsville, which is a municipality within, you know, the county, and then we got Jenkinsville.
And and Mr. Vic, um, just as a guess, and this is Vic guessing, nothing more about this, but I I would think that if we were to work with Jenkinsville Water District, there would probably be a project there that would benefit a significant number of people, that is a legitimate project that needs to be done, that would 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 resonate well. You know, that's there's something out there that that I can see that being the most, because we just built fire station, just built EMS station, even though we only built half of the rec center, we still got a rec center. So that's my thought, is that's probably the direction I would have been encouraged and looked.
I I would agree from a city standpoint, I mean, I, you guys are masters of county, but from a city standpoint, when it's a real small city, how do you, as a councilman, how do you touch everybody the most, that makes the most sense? If, when there's a project that just pops up and you go, okay, you know, a basketball court or whatever, I'm just making up whatever it happens to be, you'll know that in the future, but the first, the first go around of being successful is gonna be like, hey, we're literally trying to help everybody. Just what you said, just what you, I I like that idea, because people can say, well, you know, if if the EMS can get to me, that helps me. If the water system, you know, gets a project, I I like that idea. From a, you you guys are almost exactly opposite of us, like, we have a big population in our city who votes positively, and we we've got the history, uh, where the rural area typically didn't vote as much for it, but the sheer numbers, you've got it in an unincorporated area, so if you can do this, you you may have something special. I mean, it's gonna be hard anyway, but but it may be something special to get done.
I just wanna remind you that District Three is over half of the county. I just wanna remind y'all that, and it's all rural.
And that um, whatever serves that part of the county, the western side, we we serve Peggy, we serve Dawkins, we serve Monticello, we serve Blair, you know, if, when when we're talking about water service, and we're talking about fire services. So we have all of this over there, if we had the kind of water services and fire services that the people are asking for, we're serving urgent, we're serving the people on that side. So the the the, those things are important, uh, and and bringing all those people together, realize that these are the two most important things, they're not just gonna serve the town of Jenkinsville or Jenkinsville, they're gonna serve all these other places.
And Don's, Don runs in the mine, and Don's over by the lake, and I'm all up there where Don is.
Yep, the skinny army goes over there too, it's, it's a weird gerrymander situation.
Can you kind of help me, just looking at the categories, these, again, we, there's no running reason, there's, we created this ourselves as a successful pattern, people understand it. Um, public safety, you know, is is probably the one that most people back and understand. But if you're probably like every other community in South Carolina, the state infrastructure for your road system's terrible. And uh, we have addressed that in in most cases. Um, that's why, and and it's a very costly thing, as y'all know, particularly if you're looking at a significant road project. That's why, even though the number of projects are less, the cost of those projects are just outrageous.
So much slower.
And 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 I, very few significant projects are gonna get done in your eight-year window, it just.
Stay away from it.
If you can, and we 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 tried our best with this last one, but we still ended up, as you can see, uh, having to have some of those projects in there, it's just because the need is great. And 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 here too, well, and we won't get into the project list, but what we did mostly with that is leverage state and federal dollars. That's the real bang for the buck, so that's another big thing that you can, you can promote to those folks that are looking for, you know, what's the real value? The people that, for example, have high tax, uh, people that are more conservative, you can say, hey, we're gonna draw down additional dollars. So we may spend, for example, we got one project where we've got ten million dollars allocated for a project, but it's anticipated to draw down another sixty million from the state. And so that, most people say, God, that's a great, I spend that money any day, right? So when you lay it out in those terms, they can understand it. You write it, and and we'll, this is getting into a little bit of a, where we talked to Vic about, the way you write things on your your ballot is important. You wanna give yourself, particularly in those type projects, give yourself some flexibility when you're trying to leverage dollars, because if, for whatever reason, that leveraged dollars don't come, you can still spend it on another project, and we did that with DOT. We got, matter of fact, I think one of our categories is S O D, S C D O T, road match dollars. We know in our mind it's five twenty-one, and we promoted it in the community, it's five twenty-one, widen it, we're trying to get it to twenty. We've been talking about this for fifty years in Sumter, finally, we we we're getting some traction, but anyway. If for whatever reason we don't get the matching dollars, we got plenty of state roads that we can match them. And we're not gonna spend all, I mean, we're there, still have to come up match, but we'll do state roads to improve our community, so that's that's important. Things like that, and it helps sell the story too. I I wanted to mention that, because it is a big number, economic development, again, y'all got a lot of positive things going on. Are you, are you prepared for the infrastructure, the necessities to 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 get some of these industries in place? And if you're like us, uh, we do lean heavily on what the state's gonna do to come in and do, step up, but there are certain industries that are gonna be spin-off industries that may not get that kind of support, that if you do some things in infrastructure and to set yourself up, might be more traction. Again, it's a part of community, it's gonna love that kind of conversation. And then I I mentioned the quality of life, and again, we'll spend a lot of time on that, um, but I think it's important. We've seen a huge impact, uh, Sumter's located in the middle part of the state, we recognize that we program a lot of our tourism, we don't have home mountains, we don't have the ocean, we don't really have an interstate that goes through, so we program our success, and we do that with our facilities, and and that's one thing that we've really worked on hard together, because a lot of our facilities are in the city. But uh, some of them are run by the county, but we work together to make sure that works, because at the end of the day, it's additional tax revenue, hospitality accommodations and all that, so we see the value in that, so again, that's just our parts, if y'all Vic familiar with that. This is how we divided, you wanna talk about how we divided it up in the county, that's that, that's a good example of how we did our projects. Uh, you can see that we are all over the county. Uh, some of those are road projects, uh, some of those are fire trucks, uh, and these rural fire stations. Some of those are road projects, some of those are fire trucks, and these rural fire stations. You see the dollar signs, if you pick those, those are the two townships, where one of them did water utilities, sidewalk projects, and the road resurfacing, and I think that was in Pinewood. Maysville elected to do something in their downtown, they're trying to do like a marketplace on some of their property, their town-owned property, trying to rebuild their town. So that's what their project was, and fit into the dollars. One thing I'll tell you about Maysville, Maysville, I don't know how news travels up here, but they've been going through a lot as a town. But they got a new mayor, and in previous pennies, we didn't pass, we didn't get many votes out of Maysville, even though we had good projects that they just didn't support. The new mayor came in and said, hey, this is what we want to do, and if you're working with us, I'm going to swing an additional two hundred votes toward a penny. And we all looked around and said, we didn't have two hundred votes, and Maysville was talking about it. He ain't gonna do it, and he did it. He did it, we look back at the numbers, and that's about what he scored, was two hundred votes.
Did he suffer a lot from flooding in twenty fifteen?
Not Maysville, no, that wasn't Maysville.
We felt it, didn't we?
But anyway, my point being, if you get the right people and you get those townships behind it, they can make a difference for you. But you gotta give, I mean, they came up with the project, it's a good project, fit into the dollar amounts, and they were able to do that.
I wouldn't be a good city manager if I didn't give the county administration a hard time, because I was looking at percentage, how much did the city get, the city of Sumter versus these two, but the populations were so small, their projects were good, and in fact, they got a much greater portion percentage-wise, but honestly, we were for it, because it was needed, it made sense. You can't be so right about like, well, we only got this percent, you get the same thing, thank you. But we're big fans of what it is. We've had the mayor of Pinewood way down in the southern half come and sat down, and he was new, and we sat down with him and shared information, and, you know, when you have a few scars on your back, it's better if you can share that with somebody, so they don't have to go through it, and they're successful. So I think they benefited in a lot of ways from some of what we've learned in the past.
Jump on, I know we need to kind of get to the end of this. Penny commission, and of course, this is very important. I can tell you, having the right people in the right room, in that room, is huge. We've learned that. You handpicked the county council, I assume it's going to be the same, similar dynamics. I know that y'all get three of the votes, three of the commission members, and then your townships, I'm not sure how they'll break out.
Winsboro get two, and then there'll be one for the remaining two.
Okay, so there you go. But they need to be, we went overboard in making sure our was balanced for perception. We want to make sure that everybody understood, we were doing our very best to balance that room. But this is where you really have the control, the county council has the control, is that you want to make sure that you have the people in there that will work together. The last thing you want them to do is to get in there and start fighting over projects. When we presented, and Darren and I, when the commission was on, we met with them, and we went through every one of the projects. It took us two hours per meeting, and I don't know, eight or ten meetings, to go through this. But they knew as much about projects as we did. And if it meant we had to bring staff in, most of the time, we were able to handle it. But if there's some technical, then we would bring staff in, but most of the time, we went through that. And they knew as much about projects, they could sell a project as good as we could sell a project by the time we were done. And again, so again, put the right people in the room, that one is well-respected in the community, that's important, because they're going to be the voice. You're going to step out of it, this is going to be kind of the transition point. When that commission gets in place, and they develop the project, come out with the project list, they're going to be in the community, promoting it, supporting it, and explaining it, and doing all that. They're the face, so you gotta have, I can't overemphasize this, because we've seen it, we went, if you get the right leadership in there that work together, and even the penny that didn't pass, we had a wonderful commission. They were probably, we had the right people in the room, and we tweaked it a little bit the second time, but anyway. I don't want to beat that horse.
Well, I think, I'd like to beat that horse a little bit, because when I think about this whole process, that to me, besides the education that we all have to do for the campaign, this to me is probably the most critical point. And so I want to ask y'all, did you, to select these, because we can just, we can go without any kind of forethought on selecting people, we may end up with a totally wrong commission. Did you have some criteria for selecting these members? Did you have some kind of interview process? I mean, how did you make sure you had the right?
You and the chairman. So we know what our demographics look like, we know what our city's demographics, what the county, we work very closely on economic development, different kind of things, but again, the county's in charge of this though. Make no mistake, you're in charge of doing this. So your professional team that works for you is going to have to hold it together and shepherd this whole process. So it started with, really, Gary said, hey, we've got some ideas of who we might want to appoint at the county. We would like to keep a balance. So since they knew, they had some really good people strategically, different parts of the county, who were trustworthy, they were well thought of in the community. Again, it's about integrity, it's about trust. So they had some good ideas, we wanted to balance out, there's several people that would have been good in the city, but we knew, hey, if we were looking for a white female, or maybe African-American male, we just wanted to balance the whole thing out best we could. So people couldn't take that shot of saying, well, y'all don't care about this or this. But we weren't just doing what somebody looked like, or what gender they were, we were looking at like real solid people. And we, like Gary said, only one that didn't pass, we had an awesome committee. It changed it a little bit, but the chairman was the same chairman, and he's a fantastic guy. But it helps just because we didn't have to recreate the wheel in their knowledge. They were reminded in the first meeting, the county attorney comes in, reads the law, gives them a copy of the law, the chairman says, hey, thank you guys, and exits at stage right. And pretty much all of our other work was in executive session, because it's all contractual matters being put together. So I hope that helps a little bit, but it was, I can't, I can't overemphasize how important it was that the county's leadership said, this is what we're thinking. You think the mayor would be open to do this? And of course, the mayor and the chairman get along real well now. I mean, we've kind of built that, and it was just a wise thing to do.
I would, I know we talked about that we have to point three, and so asking y'all to kind of think about who would be good on that, I would stress, to stress their point as well, though, in picking who we put on the commission, it's not always just, is this a person of good reputation, of good integrity? Is this a person who will work? Because putting, you know, Ms. Jefferson, who's eighty-nine years old, that everybody has respect, because she's been the deacon of the church for fifty years, and he's got a good brain to him, that doesn't make him a good person on this commission, because Ms. Jefferson's not going to go out to these meetings. He's not going to be able to be a public face of it, because his physical condition limits him. So we gotta be remembering that as well, that these people have to work.
And I would add to this, work, being there for sure, and Vic's a hundred percent right. My mayor asked me, when I brought in the initial concept, he was like, okay, Darren, but I need somebody who can be a bulldog. So basically, he was worried about, wonder if, you know, rogue county council member gets, throws somebody in there who's just going to try to take the room over. He says, I want to make sure our appointments can stand up to that. And as it was, we had no rogue people in the room. But as it was, when it got to county council, they kind of had to step up and defend themselves a little bit too. So yeah, the chemistry, and again, you get the lead, so if you can reach out, or you have an idea what might be coming from the other side, you can make sure that the entire group is successful, because you have most of the appointees.
We didn't have a formal process, we had, well, we looked at somebody from economic development, somebody who was on the economic development board, was likely going to be in that room. At the time, the person was on the Chamber of Commerce, they were president at the time of the chamber, which they made this part of their body of work, their chair was in the room. And then, of course, the individual townships, they picked people in that community that they knew one would represent them well. But again, once they get behind closed doors, the big fear, always, is you have that potential to have that person that takes control, or you want them to really work together and step together as one. So let me move into the projects piece, how we did this, and this is, I think, part of the magic too. We didn't bring them, I say, the city, the county, the townships, we didn't bring them more projects than we knew we had money. So they weren't immediately looking at, okay, what do we have to cut? That puts them in a bad spot. If you bring them too many projects, you can be a little bit, there can be some massage, because they do. That's what they're, they're. It's not a rubber stamp, I mean, they have to move the money around and make it work. But if we didn't do our job and brought in what, one, put them in that position, then you set them up, in my opinion, for favor. Because inevitably, then it is going to be a battle.
It needs to be clear that your committee is not coming up with the projects. They're racking them and stacking them and doing everything, because multiple times, we say very politely, but county council is an up or down vote on this thing. So if it's, somebody comes up with an idea that's outside of what we presented, because again, these projects can get bigger, get smaller, you'll rank them at the end, all these things, there's a lot for the committee to weigh in on, it's not a rubber stamp. But you gotta be clear, it's not for them to sit up at night and go, you know what would be good, let's put a water park there. Like, no, that's leadership's point of view, it needs to come from you, it needs to come from the town. But I think that's important to know too, just what their job is, and then make them, you know, we work hard to Vic's point, like, hey, they got to read well in the work. We get it done on a timely basis, but we want to have a good, we want to have a good question to present to you to make sure you will pass it and put it on the record.
So we were, you know, resources in the room, did not vote, never voted. But they had a particular question about a project, and needed to really know how did this project get to this place? Or why is this such a priority for y'all? And then that's when we say, well, we've got these other patents we can leverage here. I mean, that's what we're there for, we're their information piece, and that's what, make sure you got the right people in the room that can share and give them all the information. So they made the right decision, they need to make an informed decision.
And they can explain the individual projects, what y'all are pulling together, and what ultimately you will bless, kind of going forward. You know, when the committee asks a question, well, why these fire trucks? We can talk until their ears fall off about why, because it's what we do every single day. And that's important, it gives a lot of credibility to it.
Kind of getting into short roads about partnerships and all that. Yeah, we talked a good bit about how the chamber was involved, how economic development, what we call a hedge group, took it over the last year. But you do need the big players in your community involved and engaged, let them be the positive message too, because people, you know, they have their own following too, and recognize that. Please bring on as many folks as you possibly can, and be prepared for those that aren't, and just, again, sit down and be with them. Sometimes you flip them, sometimes you won't. We had a person that was twenty twenty-two that did not pass, he kind of came in, he's a well-respected person in the community, but he started hitting the social media really late in the process. And then finally, we knew, going into the twenty twenty-four, somebody's got to sit down with this guy, because we all know him, and we really couldn't understand his position. He's an ultra, ultra-conservative, a business owner in the community. But somebody needed to sit down with him, so we sent somebody that, you know, just another community leader, wasn't us. We know him, sent another community leader.
Went to high school with him.
Yeah, went to high school with him, and all that, and said, hey, why were you against this last one? And he started telling them, and he said, but no, that's not completely accurate. Let me tell you the rest of the story, and what it's going to do, and all that. And when he did that, he said, hmm, I'd have known that. And he ended up being one of our champions in the twenty twenty-four, he was one out in the front. He was sending the most positive messages out to the community, but.
He was on the speakers bureau.
On the speakers bureau, and people looked around and said, well, yeah, now I get it. So I'm saying.
We can convert him, we can convert him.
Don't overlook those folks, talk with them. I mean, everybody's entitled to their opinion, but at least give them all the information so they can make an impact. That's the partnerships.
And I would say something on the partnerships. When ultimately a group works to raise money, it's really, let's say, like a local convenience store, banker, or anybody, it's good to have money for the promotion, but it's more important for them to let their employees know, like, hey, Mr. Jones, the bank president or whatever, is for this thing. So you'd rather have a picture of everybody doing this than you would a thousand bucks. It just matters, because as the word gets out, is this a good thing, is it a bad thing? And take nothing for granted, tell your great aunt, tell your cousin, tell your best friend. My mother-in-law would call and say, hey, I've got a couple of friends over here, would you talk to them for a minute? And I said, yes, ma'am, I sure will. You know, because it was just, they just didn't know, and they lived in the rural section of town, but it was a good opportunity.
So marketing, timing, you can talk about that, working backwards from Election Day, keep the message simple. Vic mentioned ours was a penny for progress, it's on everything. You see that big penny logo on everything, that's the marketing and branding.
Of course, they don't make pennies anymore.
Yeah.
Well, and that may be something you can spin off on too, I'm just saying.
They're still here, they might not be printing them, but we're spinning them.
Darren mentioned the funding has to be private. Having one person, we learned that too, you know, have somebody, and again, it can't be anybody within your organization, it has to be some private person that's passionate about this, but have somebody that kind of keeps their eye on the ball, making sure speakers are going where they're supposed to be going, or the marketing's being spent in this area, when to roll out. One person, if you can identify that, made a huge difference, particularly in this last report. And then everybody being aware of the strategy, messaging, and being flexible. Things are going to happen, you're going to get that posting from somebody on social media, somebody's got to be able to address it. We have those folks with their eye on the ball the whole time, making sure that anytime anything negative came out, there was something positive, and then it got to the point where you have to orchestrate it. Somebody says something negative, then other community members snap in right quick, but it took a little while to build that kind of momentum. Timeframe, Vic's very familiar with this, but obviously, we start back to the election day, we know is in November twenty twenty-six. The campaign, we learned through the other pennies to start earlier. We used to, you know, sign all-time election time day, you got early voting and all that other that, quite honestly, we missed in twenty twenty-two, because that was kind of the rollout of it. It was adds a T, and we kind of knew the number, so we followed that and learned that through our election evaluations. But so start a little earlier than that. The ballot question, of course, has to be prepared and ready by July. It takes three readings from your council, so we start May, we try to have it done by the middle of June, even though we have till July, just in case something happens, you need to kick an extra date in there. The penny commission, March and May, we don't bring them, and again, the work's being done, kind of behind the scenes, getting everything ready. But we focused their work through March through May. And then you can see, not necessarily a little behind, but September, depending on the types of projects, sound like you already got the ideas and concepts are coming forward, which is important, to make that timeframe work. You need to edit that piece down. We threw a lot at you guys.
We can get this PowerPoint up.
We've got a copy of it for you, yes, sir.
Okay.
I got some printed ones right there.
Okay, I'd like to see it, I wasn't had it before.
Yeah, a lot of experience, guys, and. We didn't get into a lot of the negative stuff, because quite honestly, I don't foresee y'all running up against the same stuff that we do, end up on a lot of the negative things, just because where you're at in your process. But getting it off, this first time's always the hardest, and anybody we ever talked to said this first one's the hardest. We went up to Greenwood some, a couple of years ago, when they first started it, and met with, I don't know, a couple of hundred people. They had the whole community, they had a lot of people there. And they've been successful every time since, but they've pretty much followed the same, same offense. We just went to Beaufort here this past year, Beaufort's going through it right now, so they're starting the process. Matter of fact, I've had a couple of respects from their county staff to let me know what they're doing, and they play right on schedule. Their dynamics are a little bit different, Beaufort County deals a little bit different. And then one of the ones that really baffled me, but Lexington, years ago, we went to Lexington, and they had all the townships there, and they got a lot of people. And it was so obvious in that meeting, and as a matter of fact, it was our chairman that, we were together, and he, he said, Gary, they're going to have a long time getting consensus. And I said, I felt that too, and that's been their issue. Say that, say this, you've got to come together, guys. In some way, some way, in other fashion, you've got to come together to be successful, especially this first one. Don't promise the million you can't provide. That's just personal. Don't promise the minimum camp provided, but please, come out with a positive message.
But this is our uh, second opportunity to, to do that. We've experienced that first.
Okay.
And it was, it was disastrous.
Yeah.
And I think a lot of people will ask you questions, they'll, they'll just, they'll go right back to that, well, this is bad because it didn't pass or whatever. And, and I think it gives you an opportunity, everyone you speak to, just say, this is important. We know what nothing looks like, but we want to do this for the community. It's not just, well, county wants more money to spend or, of course, you're for it because you're, you know, like, no. It really is, the community is better and when the community gets more confidence, um, they can do nice things. You see that community pride well up in people, you've seen it, you've, you've done projects. Um, you just wish there was more of it and, and this really gives you a chance to do that. One thing, I think Gary mentioned it earlier, when people go out and speak and somebody comes out, I, I remember speaking in two thousand eight to the, the big Rotary Club. And everybody was pretty nice and docile. And then there was somebody in the back of the room, might tell, he was gonna be a problem, I knew it, he was. So we got the question, Darren went, threw his hand up and he went after me a couple of times. And I was just, you know, what I wanna do is punch him in the nose, but I, I, um, I said, well, you know.
Well, we don't, we don't.
That's what I said, but I didn't, I didn't. But um, but everybody else knew he was being a jerk too. But I just welcomed his hard question, because here's the thing, we know, you know more than other people do. We're not hiding from anything. There's no deep dark secrets. Like, what we say is what we mean. That's the beautiful thing about this. This list of projects, whatever it happens to be, that's it. So they'll have problems with everything around the periphery. That doesn't matter. Like, the only thing that matters is when people go in, if you choose to put that referendum up there, yes or no. And we, we've talked with the staff about even the question and, you know, cause some people like, they won't read all the way through it. We don't need to confuse them. When it gets to yes or no, if you promote, vote yes, don't have any crazy questions, just have yes or no at the bottom, right, so they click yes. So there's, there's a bunch of nuances too.
Do you, you know, how many counties in the state have attempted this and how many are successfully?
I think I, I, um, if I didn't share, uh, well, I thought I had, um, I've got a list of every county in the state of every project, of, of every sales taxes currently in effect. And every county in the state, to my knowledge, has attempted it. Right now, there's only five that don't have a penny sales tax on the books, some have two, some have three on the books.
I mean, just capital product.
Uh, uh, well, well, penny sales taxes, so like, we're on the books, perhaps one.
One, we got.
Right, because we have local option. Um, but all around us, we're surrounded by counties that have two. Um, so Chester's got two, Kershaw's got two, Richardson's got two. Um, Newbury, I think, might have two, uh, but Lexington.
Yeah. The, the one thing I was gonna say, I'm sorry, I got a little sidestep about punching again in the nose. But the, the thing is, is when somebody's a jerk at a meeting or somebody's the contrary, take that information, spread it to the whole speakers bureau afterwards. Like, here was the hard question, here was the answer. And then the next time they go somewhere, cause inevitably it happens. I heard Mr. Jones was saying this, cause you know, word spreads around the community. Said, absolutely, let's go ahead and answer that one first and get it out there. So what turns out to be negative, really, you turn it around and make it a positive. So what we found with the speakers bureau, these volunteers going out, they had a, a PowerPoint together. We had other people there taking notes, but we spread that information to everybody. So the hard question is kind of what you mind for. You, you're putting the good information out there, this, this truth and facts. But what you wanna know is where are those hot button issues and let's work on them. Because that's the individual conversations you'll be having.
If you can't, if we can't answer the hard questions, we have no right in trying to do it. We, we got to, uh, and, and like I said, welcome the hard questions, because we want that out there. And we wanna address it, we wanna answer it.
Cause we, we have people in the city go, I'm not for this paving county road. People moved out there on a dirt road, they should know and all this stuff. It's like, whoa, whoa, whoa. And they don't care about our attendance and their eating, but we do, you know, fair point, right? So we win together, we lose together, we wanna win together.
And addressing those hard questions, they're genuine.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's the thing, they're genuine. Now, those hard questions, that hard question is about me and me only.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
You know, then, then you have to find a way through.
Yeah, we, we know what's out of bounds or not, it's related to this. But I did serve with, my first mayor was just three years ago. He said, now Darren, I was in my twenties at the time, he said, you do know there's some people who's gonna be against Jesus coming back. And you can't help those people. So say, God bless them and move on. But you need fifty percent plus one, so if you can get to the gettable, you, you can pass into the thing.
I took a good quote away from, I don't know who you Darren, but as we move at the speed of trust.
Yeah, that's true.
That's very.
It's actually Patrick Stanley out of Atlanta that said that originally, yeah.
So we've got some lunch coming and we can still carry on, you know, just, just informal discussions. Of course, this is a work session, so the idea is for us to talk in, in the work session amongst yourselves. We don't really get many opportunities to talk about things. Um, we've got a couple of things that, decision points we're gonna have to make. Um, you know, I'll kind of give you all a list of them, but you know, if we decide that this is something we wanna go forward with, then, you know, the next time that can be, would be at the December meeting. That will then start the clock on appointing the commission. So that would give us thirty days to have a commission appointment, which would be in January. And then schedules, they said, once the commission is appointed, then we start that process. Then getting the ballot written and approved, then getting y'all to approve the ballot, you got three votes on that one. You only get one vote to decide to have the referendum, but three votes in a public hearing on the ballot itself. So, so those are some of the decisions we have in front of us. Another one is how we're gonna market this. And that's gonna require some conversations of how we're gonna market. You can listen to their lessons, that how you market it makes a difference. And who, who, who runs your effort, who runs your campaign? What kind of um, resources is it going to take in order to make that happen? And that's the conversation that council members need to be comfortable with, because you're kind of turning it over to whoever it is and trusting them. Um, Anderson County just had, had an election and it failed worse than I think I've ever seen one fail before. Um, they only got twenty-nine percent positive vote. But they had no, but, but they were trying to dishold town hall meetings. And, you know, we're here, come and we'll answer all your questions. And, and they had a ton of them, they had a ton of them. Um, but that didn't work in that community of just sitting there waiting for people to come to them with questions. So it's gonna be important if we decide before how we market this.
Yeah, and don't, don't take it for granted, but the grassroots is the most powerful. You know, speaking to a men's group at church, you know, whatever, the women lead voters, you know, any kind of, anybody who will listen, because the people who will talk, if you give them good information, they're gonna talk. It's the barber shop, it's, it's the places where people go and people are talking. So if they get the information, lady cuts my hair, I make sure that that woman knows some stuff. Cause you tell us more people than any of us, right? It just happens that way.
We're gonna run. Thank y'all.
Thank y'all so much.
Big, big knows we're phone call.
Yep. Bottom of the podium.
That's right, thank you.